There couldn't have been anybody better than Mr. Myra to be able to talk about sustainability. Because he's worked for three entities broadly, he's worked for the Tata's which in my way, in my definition are a natural candidate for sustainability because they looked after communities. They are a social enterprise and a social business, though they may not call themselves that. He was then the chairman of the Boston Consulting Group advising companies to be futuristic and to be able to make them more agile and work with leaders. And then he was part of the planning commission, he was a member of the planning commission. And he worked with the government to bring about policy intervention. He's an author of multiple books, he's very active right now and he's somebody that we all can learn a lot. So without any further ado, let me welcome Mr. Arun Myra. And Mr. Myra, welcome, good morning, it's good to talk to you again. And this time the context is the India's most sustainable companies, which is a study that BW Business World and Sustain Labs Paris have done together. And the results of that study will be out tomorrow. But the study took us four to six months in a deep way. And it is a continuous endeavor that will bring insights for other leaders and companies to get inspired and have sustainability as part of their DNA and as part of their strategy. So there's nobody better to talk to us about sustainability, welcome Mr. Myra. You'll have to unmute yourself, Mr. Myra.
Thank you, thank you so much, Anurag. You know, my mother used to say when I was growing up that she will know if I'm becoming a good person by noticing the company that I keep. She wanted to know, you know, who are you with boys are your friends and girls your friends? Because by the quality of those people, she would know whether I'm doing well and alright. And Anurag, I've been spending a lot of time with you the last few weeks. And my mother would be very pleased to know that I'm keeping your company. You're a good person, you're doing good things evidently from my perspective, which is why you're inviting me to be with you more frequently. So thank you so much.
Thank you for being kind and so gracious, coming from somebody like you who I have tremendous respect for. And I got to know you, you know, it means a lot and I hope I can do justice to your words and in a sustainable manner and improve whatever we do. We have a long way to go also, but grateful for your words.
And this initiative is, you know, as much Minia's as my going to say that, I was going to say that my mother would be even more pleased to notice that I've now acquired another new friend in Minia. And I had a very nice conversation with her, I've read her work also now. And I'm hoping that I would be able to, you know, contribute towards both your efforts in creating a much larger movement in India and around the world of companies who take their responsibilities as citizens of society more seriously than companies have been so far. So I'm going to speak about five Cs. The first is COVID, we are in COVID time and we must all talk about COVID and start every discussion and end every discussion with COVID, so I will talk about COVID. The second is corporations, which is our prime subject. The third C is citizenship. The fourth C is contracts. And the fifth C is constructions. So I'm going to begin with COVID. The COVID pandemic has been a huge speed bump for economies, the progress of economies around the world, including India's economy of course. And here the Indian economy, which is a large economy, that was growing well for some decades now. And you know, we were celebrating it as becoming one of the fastest growing economies in the world. And because China was faster than us for some time, we would qualify and say, well, we are the world's largest and fastest growing democratic economy. So just to say amongst democracies, India is the largest fastest growing economy. And this Indian economy also hit a speed bump. The Indian economy is a big bus, it's got a billion point two billion persons somehow, somewhere traveling along in this big bus as the Indian economy grows. And when COVID, the big bump came and we couldn't break ourselves or slow ourselves quickly enough, we hit this bump and the bus came to a shattering stop. And then what did the people inside the bus notice? First, who were the people inside the bus? There were of course the people at the front seat with the driver, the driver who had the steering wheel as well as the accelerator underfoot. And the driver had some gauges in front to gauge how well the bus was doing and progressing. And just behind the driver were sitting the, the people were close to policymakers and they were, well, big business people and economists sitting just behind the government. And these people were also looking at the gauges on the dashboard. And there were two gauges, which I'm going to come back to by just after describing the rest of the bus. Behind these people inside the bus were others also sitting in the bus. And as the Indian economy has been growing the last twenty thirty years, the people in the front were provided more comfortable seats and safer seats. They were even beginning to be served, you know, French wine and Swiss cheese as they traveled. The people inside the bus behind them were also having seats not as plush and they were given sandwiches, they were getting enough to eat as they traveled. So when the bus suddenly stopped, the people inside the bus were surprised to see that there were many others who had apparently been traveling in the bus who just now fell off onto the road. They were clinging onto the bus as it was moving faster, they were on the roof of the bus, but there was no space for them inside, they're exposed to sun and wind and rain, they were traveling along. And when the bus suddenly stopped, all these people fell on the road and they started walking, looking for places to get shelter and food and so on. And this is when many people, including wealthy people and policymakers, began to realize that the Indian economy's growth had not been inclusive. Everyone wasn't benefiting equally by the growth of the Indian economy. In fact, some people's existence was precarious while the economy was growing. So back to the two gauges in the front. One gauge, a very big gauge, is the GDP meter, which policymakers and economists kept telling the government, you've got to press on it, make the growth go faster, let the needle keep moving, you know, further and further. And two trillion isn't enough, let's have three trillion GDP, dollars GDP, let's have five trillion. That's what they were paying attention to, saying that if the bus moves faster, somehow everybody will be safer, better and more well off. The other meter, the second gauge, was a particular interest, not so much to the persons in the government seat in the front, but to the business people sitting just behind, was a stock market meter, which was showing the, like an RPM meter, how the revving of the engine was going. And sometimes it moved up and the market went up and then it came down and it kept wavering up and down and they were quite delighted watching, you know, let's keep this RPM meter in the zone that we want it to be. So these were the two principal instruments that were being used. And we keep hearing, if you hear our channels, TV channels, especially the business channels, economic channels. Every program has the graphs of how the stock market is doing. I mean, you can't concentrate on anything without being also expected to see what's happening to the stock market, which is half the screen or a portion of the screen. So these were the two instruments that were being paid attention to, to gauge how well the economy was doing. These instruments were hardly indicating what was happening to the people clinging onto the bus or the people on top of the bus. The presumption was if GDP went up and if the stock market went up, somehow those people would be better off. Actually, it was turning out to be the reverse, that the more the people in the front benefited, the less those people on the outside were able to cling on to growth. So that's the story of COVID, it's a story about the whole global economy paradigm, in which by enabling finance to move around the world very easily, go where it wants to, have ease of doing business where it goes, to leave whenever it feels like, shut the factory, fire the people, because now you can move your factory somewhere else in some other country. The rules of the economy were making life easy for migrant capital, but they were making life much harder for workers who had to migrate, to find work, to earn money. So that's the story that COVID has revealed. The condition of the global economy and the weak structures of that economy from the perspective of the majority of the people in the world. The principal agent of the economy, of growth in the economy is the corporation, is the business corporation. Business corporations create more products, they spread and create more production and thus they grow economies. The first corporation formally formed as a limited liability company was the East India Company, created in sixteen hundred. And the East India Company was given a charter by the Queen to operate, take ships to go to India, China, wherever, to make profits. And the governors of the East India Company, this limited liability or this founded company, were required to ensure that the accounts were kept properly, that the profit was calculated properly and that the investors in the corporation, the wealthy investors in the corporation, were given profits equitably, the distribution was equitable. So that was the role of the corporate board of the East India Company. Now this hasn't changed since four hundred years now. The Chicago School of Economics in the last fifty years made this in fact a complete mantra and ideology, that the business of business must be only business, which is to make profits for investors. And it's been very hard the last forty fifty years for companies like Tata's who you mentioned and others, who say our business is not just making profits for our investors, our business is to ensure that the well-being of everyone in society improves at the same time. They were declared, and I was present at the time, when they were declared as socialist companies and told that India will not progress unless Tata, the leading large conglomerate of India, stops being a socialist enterprise and becomes a more hard-nosed capitalist enterprise. So this ideology was being driven down us, that business leaders and boards must concentrate on creating shareholder wealth. So that's the idea of the corporation that we have around us, which is why, as I said, every show on the business and the markets will tell you how companies' profits are doing and the market is doing. It's very hard to change this paradigm. And when recently the Business Roundtable in the United States, the leaders there, some hundred odd companies said, look, we've got to start caring for other stakeholders and not just for shareholders, they got a pushback from none other than the economists of the Chicago School saying, no, this is a woolly headed idea, please focus on doing what you're charged by society to do, which is to protect the investors' interests and produce returns and growth of wealth for them. Now, the limited liability corporation, as I said, the idea that came about some four hundred years ago and has grown and grown, has been given every right that a common citizen has. It has the right to own property, it has the right of free speech, like ordinary citizens have. It has the right to sue others, other corporations or even common citizens, which every citizen has. So it is a legal citizen of societies with all the rights that ordinary citizens have. However, it is not responsible for all its liabilities by the construct of the corporation. In other words, we have created a class of citizens in society who are more equal than others. And you remember George Orwell's book in nineteen eighty-four, where he said, you know, there's some animals, or the animal farms, sorry, or Orwell's Animal Farms, where he said, well, some animals are more equal than others. And the corporations have become as citizens, much more equal than ordinary citizens. They are so huge, some of them, that they are larger than countries. They have the wealth to engage corporate lawyers, to defend themselves, not just against ordinary citizens. But now even they can take countries to court in arbitration disputes because investors' interests are given a special protection under the global trade rules. So this is where the concept of the corporation has ended up. And we have to not think of this again. How can someone who is required to look after his or her own interest and not be held accountable for the impact of his or her activities on others, be a good citizen of a society? So how can a corporation be a good citizen of societies? The investors in corporations don't even know what is happening in the companies in which they invest. Well, even the East India Company's directors really didn't know, maybe there was no communication in those days enough, that what Robert Lai was doing in India or what was being done by people who went to China to force opium into China. And they were concerned about the profits that they were getting, right? Some calculations, some sorry, data analysis for the last seventy years done by some eminent economists, Marjia Azakat and others, shows that in the nineteen seventies, until the nineteen seventies, the average investor held on to a stock for a few months. By the nineteen nineties, investors', investments in particular stocks were held for maybe a day or just a few hours. And by twenty twenty, the average holding in a stock is a few seconds. Because now everything is being done electronically and what the investors are doing, who can invest on behalf of us all of us, is just tracking the little spikes and just trying to get ahead of the change in the spike in the stock indices to make more money for the investors. I mean, most investors don't even know which companies they are invested in, they go through a portfolio and what the company's name, even if they know, they won't even know what the company produces. And if they know what the company produces, they won't even know where it is produced and how the people who are producing it are being treated. So the disconnect between investors and the people who work in companies or the people who live around where companies work has become enormous. The result of this is another result, which is that the wealth of the people who invest and can take, move their wealth around very quickly without the liabilities, as I said, has kept growing and grown so much faster than the wealth of those who have no wealth but only have their work to give, that the inequalities in society have grown to those huge limits, which Ikkyi has been documenting and many others and Oxfam. And we know in our country, for example, that there are probably four or five people who have as much wealth, I mean, as the bottom two thirds of the country put together. So inequalities have grown enormously. Now, is this desirable? Many people would argue, who are in the, you know, let the investors get returns and then the whole society benefits, they'd say, so what? In fact, let the investors not be dampened any further, don't tax them anymore because then their, you know, animal spirits will be dampened and then they won't make more investments and then it doesn't benefit the society. But look what's happening at the same time, is society really benefiting? Is the wealth trickling down fast enough? And it is not, it is not. So I've talked about so far the COVID, what is woken up to, corporations, the construction of the corporation, which I'm going to come to again. I've talked about citizenship and I'm now dwelling on the contract. As I said, the contract that society has with corporations is produce wealth for investors. We have to change that contract. We cannot be as a society expecting that some citizen has been given the rights to do whatever they do without any concern for the effect of what they do on others. So as a first step, as a first step, and this is where your initiative is so important, is that corporations must at least begin to acknowledge that they have a responsibility for the condition of society around them and the environment, physical environment in which they operate. Please first acknowledge this. Don't keep taking shelter under this Chicago thesis that your business is only that of doing business and making profits. First acknowledge that. Second, if you acknowledge that, that you are concerned, then please show it. Show it by informing everybody about what you are doing to help improve the condition of the society around as well as preventing damage to the environment or improving the physical environment around. Show what you're doing, start to report the impacts that you're having, plus and minus. Just like you're expected to report by the laws of the stock exchange, how your profits are doing, whether up or down, you can't hide the downs either because you've got to be transparent to your stakeholders. So let's have transparent reporting of the impacts of your corporate operations, your products and your operations on the conditions of society and the natural environment. The movement to do this, and this is where Minia and CEO Sustain Labs has been, one of our forerunners and leaders, but she would also share that it's not easy to get all corporations to start reporting simply and transparently in language that the citizens can understand, that okay, I get it, I can see you're concerned and I can see that you are understanding what matters to me by your saying what you're doing or what you realize that you weren't doing. Let's have that conversation together, let's be building a consensus in what is the contract between the corporation and us and society. So this conversation is necessary between citizens and corporations and that is not happening. I go back to my example of the bus. As that bus was growing faster and getting more comfortable inside, the people inside got air conditioning and well, there was too much sun coming from outside, so they had tinted glasses, it's very comfortable inside, you don't care what is happening outside. And so because it was now noise proof, so that they could enjoy their music inside and it was, you know, light proof or reduced, so that they weren't disturbed by what is happening on the outside, they didn't even know that there were so many people who weren't living well enough. We weren't listening, the people inside had just shut off, listening to the people on the outside. They were not people like us anymore. We were busy spending time with people like ourselves, whether our friends in New York or in London or Hong Kong and, you know, Indians were now connected with the global world, but a very narrow slice of India was connected with the global world. Most of India was still living not as well as it should have been living and we weren't even aware of it, it seems. So we have to think about beyond the contract also now, the construction of the corporation itself. And for this, I'd come back to the concepts that are being used in the environmental movement of the circular economy, where we say that, you know, everything must keep circulating, the materials must keep circulating, they become waste, please convert the waste into something useful, bring it back into the economy circularly. Similarly about energy, don't waste it, let it produce energy in other forms and keep it in circulation in the economy. Because if something stops circulating and starts accumulating somewhere, it destroys the health of the system. And thus plastics, which are very good as a material because they provide hygiene, they are light and easy to carry and so they are a convenience. But when we discard them and they don't circulate anymore, then they pile up in oceans and in streams and as we all realize now, that it's destroying our rivers, it's destroying fish in the ocean, we're killing cattle who accidentally take the plastics, we've got to keep everything circulating. So I'm going to apply the same concept to the financial economy or to the economy. Now, in the economy, the construct of the corporation, the limited liability corporation, also one in which we say, don't tax it too much because then investors won't be attracted to invest more, has started to accumulate wealth. Now, where does this wealth come from? There are people who are working in enterprises, their own, they could be very tiny enterprises or large enterprises, the people had to work in those enterprises. They create the profit actually by doing their work efficiently and producing something which then can be sold at a better price. The profit however, doesn't go to the people who work, the profit goes up into this corporation where it is distributed amongst the investors. And so over time, the investors in corporations become very wealthy. There is a way in which their wealth could have been circulating downwards. One of course obviously is taxes, but then we're reducing the taxes on corporations and on wealthy people because their incentives are reduced. The second you can say is, well, they should voluntarily spend money like Tata's used to, or does so. America, I heard was very nice to hear, does so. But how much is that? I mean, if you talk about the two percent of the profit, two percent of the profit which should go into CSR, so how much is the profit of a company in terms of its revenues? A very effective, efficient company might say ten percent. We're talking about point two percent of the revenues of the company are invested back through CSR. The ninety nine point eight percent or the whole hundred percent, how was it produced? What damage did the production cause? What harm did the products that were so sold, produced and sold cause? And how can point two percent make up for that? So that's again a wrong concept of how response, our responsibility should be exercised by corporations. The third of course is philanthropy, that the wealthy people have started to create trusts and funds and they are investing those funds and principally initially they would invest those funds in other money-making ventures to keep increasing their funds, one of it. Or begin like Bill Gates saying, no, I want to give my money to do good for society. But again, look at the maths of this. I mean, how much is the investments that the Bill and Miranda Gates Foundation does in relation to the shareholder value of Microsoft today and the profits and dividends that Microsoft continues to make? So it's good things, all CSR is good. Philanthropy is very good, but it's very insignificant. It's not going to be improving the circulation fast enough to enable the people at the bottom to start earning and keeping some wealth for themselves. And that comes to now my last C, which is about the construct of the corporation. The idea of social enterprises has got on and that's a good thing. And many of the wealthy people are putting their money into social enterprises by which they mean an enterprise that does good things. It is, you know, doing something for education or in the environment. So it does good things, so there's no harm being done in those things, good things are being done. But whatever surplus profit is made in that venture goes back to whom? It goes back into the investors and so they do expect some return. And maybe they're reducing their expectation of return somewhat, but there is no profit and wealth accumulated in the hands of the teachers and the workers in these social ventures. And so a construct of a venture in which the workers themselves are the persons who begin to accumulate wealth because they are the shareholders of the venture themselves. So this form of social ventures, this form of social enterprises is one that Mahapar Gandhi had propagated very well. And we have many examples in this country, of course, we have Amun, we have Seva and several others. We've grown for years, we know how they operate and the benefits. We know how they operate and the benefits that they provide to women who own just cattle or women who, you know, sew clothes or do farming. We have these models. But are these the models that we celebrate when we talk about responsible business ventures? These are the most responsible business ventures. And we must encourage more forms of cooperation in which the workers themselves and the producers themselves are also the shareholders and they are able to keep the wealth rather than sending the wealth up to those investors, as I say, where it accumulates and trickles down rather too slowly. So let's create a circular wealth economy alongside our creation of a circular ecological economy also. I will end with what I heard the CEO of Mariko say, that putting people first, not the investors first. And I like what he said further, by people first, it was not just our own employees and not even just the workers in our own supply chain. It was people around us first. That has to be the thesis. The purpose of the economy is to serve the people. It's not people's purposes to just serve this abstract thing called the economy and make the GDP grow. So I remind you about my five Cs in the COVID. The corporation, the idea of citizenship and caring for others. And then the contract between this corporation and society. And finally about the construction of the corporation. Time has come to start reconstructing corporations. Thank you, Anurag.
Thank you, Mr. Myra.
Thank you, Mina.
All right, are there any more questions?
I have a few questions while we wait for other questions. Dr. Mariko firstly, thank you so much for your time. Also for your generous references to Sustained Labs and to me and to Business World, which I think they absolutely merit and deserve. And Mr. Batra, can I ask an opening question or would you like to?
Of course, of course.
You mentioned at the beginning, at the early part of your talk that at Tata's as well, you, you know, you were said, you were told, the company was told that do what you're supposed to do, which is increase the shareholder value. And you know, there is another rhetoric that we hear from corporates saying that do what you, do what you already do well. You know, don't venture into new ways of doing things. And I personally have heard this also. Prominent thermal power company owner saying that, you know, let's just do what we know how to do and let's not venture towards other sources. Now, not all companies are like Mariko where by design and through their business model itself from the start, they are a social entrepreneur. Large companies should be and must be, you know, social entrepreneurs and they are a great example of that. Now what about companies who are large and who are doing things differently? And they now need to move towards, you know, they're doing things in certain ways and they need to now move towards doing things differently responsibly in the ways that you pointed out. What kind of, what would lead them to take that leap of faith? To actually, you know, move to do, doing things which are increasing value for stakeholders beyond shareholders? To be doing things which they already do not do well, but they can, you know, start to do things well?
Thank you. But first I want to correct, when I said about Tata's that these global investors in the 2000s who began to tell Tata's and the Tata's was, you know, has become very global and it has operations all over the world and investors from around the world. So it was in 2000 that the managing director of Tata Steel, CEO Tata Steel, was on an analyst call, was told by a young analyst who probably been to some business school in the US that, you know, he's looking at the numbers of Tata's and saying, well, they could actually squeeze out a little more profit here and there. So since Tata's, Tata Steel used to advertise those days that, you know, we also make steel. And Tata's, like Anurag said, has been famous for looking after the society and the community. This young chap tells the CEO of Tata Steel, Mr. X, let me call him X, when is Tata's going to stop being a socialist enterprise? Now, the word socialist has become a bad word, certainly in the United States. And Bernie Sanders, and I'm going to stray a bit because we're going to come back to Chicago School and, and the United States, right? Bernie Sanders is being thought of as a liability by the Democratic Party because he's proud to say, yes, I do care for society. So that means that I'm a socialist, then I am a socialist. So here also in India, there are people who are saying, and let's go there, that the word socialist, which has been introduced into our, which is in our constitution, be removed. Now these are MPs in our parliament in India, they say so. I am participant in many economic discussions in this country and I know that I'm labeled very easily to be a union leader or a socialist. We will talk on behalf of the needs of people who don't have power. And I'm proud also to say, yes, if socialism means that I care for society, yes, I am a socialist. But if you think that caring for society prevents the capitalists from making more money, then all the more reason, I'm going to say you're wrong. I don't want to be that sort of capitalist. Yes, I am a capitalist also like Tata's are. They run companies, they make money, they make profits. Who says they don't make profits? Very smart managers. So we've got to change the labels firstly, talk about now the company. So I'm saying to your point now, that I notice amongst business circles here, companies like Tata's as well as Mariko perhaps, find it hard to stand up amongst their colleagues even and say, let's all of us collectively have ourselves measured by these standards. They'll say, come on, you like to do it, you do it. This is not what we are supposed to do. We are supposed to make money, that's what you know, the whole ideology is and we've been taught in by business schools. So please don't do that. So to carry your colleagues along in business is not easy. And we need a movement by business because it has to be a voluntary movement. And if it is not going to be built by business, you're going to have regulations and controls. And then you're going to say, oh, we're making it hard to do business. So we do have regulations which say, please treat your workers fairly, look after their safety, make sure their wages are paid on time, don't discharge workers whimsically, you know, because they have a continuity of needs on their side, right? But no, no, these are labor laws that come in the way. Are we going to be a socialist country if you have labor laws? Similarly environmental laws, you see? So I come to, if you want to get companies to change, Tata's realized this and I did. I was with Tata's so many years and I've been consulting with companies, including Mariko. I was on their innovation council before, when it was founded. And I had to design when I joined the planning commission because I can't be consulting with any, being with any private companies. These are the difficulties that they have. So this movement here which you've got and which Anurag has been the leader of here is to just celebrate those who are doing good things. Let society begin to admire such people. That's the contract then, you know, we like these people, we will buy these people's products, we would like to work with these companies. That's how they would get the benefit of being good companies by the support they get from their stakeholders, their customers, the pool of employees who will join them and so on. So that is the role that we must play. We cannot be trying to control responsibility. It's a thing you feel. And we have to encourage more people who don't naturally feel it to see it as in their good. Can't hear you.
There, there's some audio, can I take, ask the tech team?
Yeah, now it's fine.
No, it's fine, it was very temporary. So you're right, Mr. Myra, that, you know, as companies do it and citizens and the civil society recognize and admire that, it incentivizes them to be able to continue on that path. That's what he would say.
Yes.
So you know, you talked about this five C framework. Now tell us why this five C framework, of course, one of the Cs is COVID, is even more relevant post-COVID? When you explained it in your talk and clearly even the government focus has been bottom of the pyramid, the middle belly. I mean, we may have viewpoints upon how the government has done and how it can do on economy. But one thing that the government did right was to get food to people who needed. There was no food unrest, there was no social unrest. By and large, over the last eight months, there have been no social unrest. So tell us why sustainability and looking after communities and really serving citizens through business is the prime responsibility of business?
Yeah, you know, I put three Rs here, relief, recovery and resilience. When there is a crisis and people are down and out, you must provide relief, yes? And so the government, yes, has made sure that those who did not have food were given food and not just government, I must say, civil society organizations perhaps have done even more. Really, young people have gone out and people have gone out to ensure that those who were very hard up, at least had food and they provided in some cases, if they could, some shelter. I mean, they couldn't employ them because they themselves had didn't have money to employ people. So giving relief is a natural human feeling and we must encourage it. We must encourage it. But why was the relief necessary? Because the condition of the society was such that people couldn't look after themselves. And that is why relief become necessary. This goes back into the concept as we said about the corporate responsibility. If on one side by your actions, you're creating conditions in which people cannot earn, cannot live well. And then you give charity to, you know, build a hospital to look after them or to run a food kitchen to look after destitute people. And then you're admired for being such a nice charitable company, yeah? Look at your CSR. So when CSR is in the form of charity, it's not the genuine responsibility. So let's make that distinction. Let's make that distinction. Then we come to this word recovery. Now the big word, everyone's talking, when will the economy recover? And what are the indicators we are using? When will the GDP come? Just look at the papers every day. If it will be the fourth quarter, the first quarter of next year, what will it be? What's the measure again? I want that number to go up, see, on that instrument gauge. And the other one is, oh, the stock market is doing very well, maybe the economy is recovered. And we're already finding that the stock market actually has produced even more wealth for quite a few people during the lockdown, while the others, as you pointed out, were completely falling off. Even in the United States, in Dallas, to see long lines of people in food lines in Dallas and the same place, on the same day, you're being told that the Wall Street has, you know, broken records. So there is a disconnect here when we think about the economy. We don't want to recover the old economy, saying so. We want to create a new resilient economy. So what is the shape of the new resilient economy? Firstly, the gauges that the persons who are steering the economy and the people who guiding them use cannot be just these two gauges. We'll have to have at least one more or two more gauges to talk about inclusion and how the incomes of people at the bottom are growing. By incomes growing of people at the bottom, the whole economy will grow and those people's lives will become more resilient. We also need to have one more gauge or maybe couple more gauges telling us what is the condition of our water resources, what's the condition of our forest covers, what is the condition of the air? We can see it around us. I'm suffering the bad air here in Gurgaan, hazardous levels, yes. We've got, this is a millennium city, I can see the skyscrapers around glass and, and steel and the highway on which I can come from, the national highway to this place without having to stop even once. Because it's designed for people in luxury cars to be able to travel easily. So this is one shape of the econ, one part of the economy. And I don't want to see my signs of recovery of the economy by how things improve within my enclave. I want to know what's happening outside my enclave, but where is the indicator of that? I want that on the bus too, yes? Pollution, water, India is the most water-stressed country in the world. As people are pointing out that in the next 20 years, four or five of the largest cities in India will be out of water. We can't carry on growth like this. Okay, so resilience. To know that we are resilient, let's have new gauges. Then we are going to have to find new strategies to produce results for those gauges. As every manager is told, you manage what you measure. We are just not measuring all the right things. At least put those measures up, then we'll discover the strategies of how to get there. And therefore to corporations also, to the question I was asked earlier, that you know, when corporations set themselves the sights that I want to be judging myself, even if society doesn't judge me, I want to judge myself by how well I'm doing in all these three parameters, okay? My profits, my impact on society and my impact on the natural environment. I want to judge myself because it matters to me. Yes, and if more and more people judge themselves like that, which is our job in civil society to make sure that they will be judged like that, then we'll be all right.
Thank you so much. Now, you know, of course Tata's is an institution, it's not just a company. It's synonymous with national development. I mean, I keep saying that much before it was fashionable to call it a social enterprise. You know, Tata's by building what they built in Jamshedpur, in other parts of the country, they really looked after their communities. You know, they integrated the welfare of the people and their well-being and their sustenance as part of the strategic kind of thinking. And they implemented it much before. I keep saying Mother Teresa was the first world, possibly first social entrepreneur without being called so. So while the buzzwords are important, India is lacking so much behind on the SDGs. I mean, if you look at all those SDGs, almost all of them, we have long way to go. So how do we prioritize? Which are the SDGs we need to do better? I mean, look at the quality of air in Delhi, right? The lesser said the better. Look, you talk about water scarcity. Look at, you know, any aspect. And again, you know, mining is an important sector because it provides raw material to manufacturing. It is also a big revenue, you know, for the government, right? But mining is not necessarily responsible. So tell us one, how do we prioritize which SDG goals we should go after first? And second, what is your view on mining?
Well, I think, let me take the first question, it's a really profound question. The SDGs, there are seventeen SDGs. They cover many environmental matters, including like you said, air and carbon and pollution. They do cover water matters, they cover the ocean, they cover forest covers and so on. And they cover many social matters also, education, health, inequalities and so on. So there are seventeen goals. The seventeenth is of course partnerships, partnership. But sixteen of them cover, as I said, the whole gamut of economy, environment and society. These have been distilled by a lot of consensus and debates amongst people all around the world, in all the countries of the world, civil society, business people, government people. Debated these over a couple of years and came out that all of these require to be improved. And the point was, you can't just improve one of them and then think the world is going to be all right, you know? They all interrelate with each other. The environment is related to the condition of society. The condition of society relates to the condition of the economy. They're all interrelated with each other. So you cannot just pick and choose, you've got to improve the whole system. Any action that you take on one without understanding the consequences it has versus on other actions, on other areas is actually going to make the system unhealthy. So this idea that we can focus on one thing and if you do the one thing, we're going to make the whole thing healthy, is actually wrong. By just focusing on giving a medicine for the heart of the patient, because the heart is weak, a medicine which causes the liver to collapse, you're not going to make the patient healthy. So you have to have the liver, the heart, the mind, everything kept in view at all times and improved together. So we need a different approach to improving the SDGs than the usual management approach, which is focused on the one thing that you can do and do that very well and do it on scale everywhere. In fact, that is the approach that has caused systems to collapse. So let's start with a different approach. Many things have to be improved together. But as you say, how do I choose which things? Now I come to all these forces, they don't appear in the same way in Kerala or in Alunachal Pradesh. They're different in Rajasthan, they're different in the desert in Africa, they're different in England and they're different somewhere else. So SDGs apply everywhere, but every place, the right combination has to be found locally. And so, but it can't be one thing, as I pointed out. And so, but it can't be one thing, as I pointed out. You can't just look after, let me say like mining. I'm going to make sure the mining is most efficient, right? But if while mining, I'm not looking after the trees I'm destroying or the, you know, the places of sanctity that the people pray for and get, you know, comfort in their societies, then I'm not looking after the system at all. So you cannot be solving this problem by saying, let's focus on one thing. Even if it's mining, I've got to say, if I'm mining in some area, what's the system around me? Let's make sure the whole system around me, the people around me, the environment around me and my mine, my mining are done in a sustainable, resilient manner. So systems thinking done by stakeholders together in the communities in which they operate is the way to go forward. We cannot have global solutions to the SDG problems. There'll have to be local system solutions collaboratively found by stakeholders and collaboratively implemented. If every part of the world was environmentally better off, the society there was better off and the local economy was producing enough jobs, everybody, we met the SDGs. So you've got to do bottom up. We stop down experts trying to find solutions for things which are so diverse all over the world. Doesn't work. The experts don't agree with each other either. And COVID is a classic example. We've got the doctors telling us, what is the solution to prevent COVID? But people say, my life is being badly affected, my well-being is badly affected in other ways. I need to go work, I need to get food. So I'm going to break your rule of the lockout. I'm going to maybe go to a place where I can't keep six feet distance because my whole life depends on other things also. So just leaving it to the doctors to create well-being for the world is not good. You have to have, like I said, other experts also and they must be able to work together. And there won't be one universal solution for resilience after COVID propagated by the WHO. Every part of our country, every city in the country is going to have to find its own solutions. And people locally must collaborate with each other.
Thank you so much. Minia, I just, you know, I was thinking, I've not seen the complete study. But when you've done the study and looked at the top companies, what is the common thread you find across? And from a policy standpoint, hence what are the interventions needed for other companies to be incentivized to do that? If you and Mr. Myra can bring some kind of insight on that, you know?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Batra. And I also wanted to bring in two questions from the audience which are, you know, very profound. I'll just club them together. So it's a great question. I mean, if I have to think about, let's say, the top ten companies in our ranking, there's one thing which stood out is that it's leadership driven. So maybe in other countries, it's more of a collective, which is an organization which is driving. But then at least in India, we see that leadership is very important. The CEO, the owner, promoters, you know, them driving it has been an important factor. And the rest is really very varied. I would say that increasingly, at least the top ten, they are reporting. And two out of the ten are not, but then eight, at least eight of the ten are. And so these, I think these would be the common factors. But otherwise, some are doing well in some aspects and some are not. It's been, it was very difficult actually to assess and rank. And in terms of policy, maybe it's a question to you, Mr. Myra, based on what our observations were, that there is a lag between policy and industry in most cases and most parts of the world. Like even during the financial crisis, when I was in banking, you know, there was that lag in two thousand and seven and eight. And now, when you're looking at driving, when India, you know, given that it is now part of various international conventions and treaties, it is trying to drive corporates towards being more energy efficient and, you know, for better waste management, these two aspects they are driving. There still seems to be a disconnect between policies that will work. One reason that I can think of is that there are less people like you who are, who have been part of business and who are part of policy. But what are the other reasons? And maybe you could comment on this as well, on, you know, people being on the bridge, you know, on the bridge. But are there other reasons which can, looking at solutions, which can maybe fill this, can be a solution to this lag between policies which will work and driving companies towards at least better energy management, energy efficiency and management?
Leadership and policies that will work, policies that will work, I start there and then go to the leadership. You talked about the financial crisis in the US. And we had people from Goldman Sachs who were business people, yeah, with the government. Okay? Now, the solution that came out didn't create the resilient economy, right?
That's true.
So just be careful about having, everybody has an idea, you see, ideology. So if you get the business people inside your government whose ideology is that, you know, business must be made to grow and maybe that's the reason you get them. You want growth and you want business to be free, say, look, and so. So it's not business people, it's again ideas, yeah? What are the government persons as well as whoever it is from the business or from civil society there? Are they caring for the whole? And this is one thing in government. You know, we are supposed to be for everything. And business, I said ideologically is not supposed to be, but should be. So we want leaders who think of the whole system. Yeah? That even if I'm responsible primarily for one part, I'm going to be ensuring that don't cause harm to anything else around. So I'm going to listen to the others, the other experts, collaborate with them. So we can come with a system solution. But this skill of listening to people or not like yourself, the skill of collaborating with others who may have different interests is the missing skill. And the seventeenth goal of the SDG says what? It says that we just need much better collaboration and partnerships. Because without that, we're not going to achieve the SDGs at all. If you continue with this thesis, that you get people are very good at execution. But execution of what? So the ideology starts with, what is it I need to improve? What is the indicators of the health of the whole system? Let me take the whole SDGs. So execution has to be done collaboratively. And I cannot be saying, look, I've executed so many things, well, leave it to me and I'll do it. That's dictatorship with a very narrow view. And CEOs are dictators. Because they are given the command of all the resources, they are appointed from above. Democratic leaders elected by the people, you have to be accountable to the people who appoint you. And not say, I can fire you because my job is secure, someone else gave me the job. The board gave me the job, I fire you. You can't, Prime Minister can't fire the people of India, put them onto a boat and send them somewhere else because, you know, our economy can't support so many people. You're responsible for their conditions also. So leadership must be a person who has compassion and care for many things around and willing to listen to other points of view, okay? But there has to be a caring. So I have a definition of a leader. A leader, she or he, who takes the first steps towards something that he or she deeply cares about and in ways that others then wish to follow. And all these words are important. You must take the first steps. I mean, they're risky, no one else has done it, like Mahatma Gandhi or like the companies we're talking about. No one else is doing it. But why do you do it? Because you care. And I'm saying care for it deeply, not because others tell you that you should be caring for this and you've got to be measured by this like CEOs generally are. I care for it deeply as a human being. I care for these others around me, I care deeply. And you take these steps in ways that others then wish to follow. They see you as a role model and they care for the same sorts of things. And you're showing them by your steps how they can do it. We need such leaders in all walks of life and certainly in the corporate sector too.
You know, Minia and Dr. Myra, what is coming to my mind, Dr. Charji, is that, that, you know, possibly, you know, glad we started this, it was, I was, so Myra, I don't know if you remember, Nita Mishra had come to you.
Yes.
You know, and of course you know her personally and you know her family. We hired her as a sustainability editor five years back. And unfortunately, she had to leave and so on and so forth, right? But we should possibly look for young leaders to become champions of sustainability early on in companies. You know, leaders who are promising. So I think to be able to recognize those young leaders, find them and kind of encourage them to go on the path of sustainability, intertwining strategy with sustainability in a deep way. I think that encouragement is very important. You know, social impact and sustainability leaders, young leaders who possibly less than forty or thirty-five. And you know, because the sooner you kind of encourage this kind of behavior or this kind of thinking or this kind of, you know, way of doing business, I think it will help India and it will help those companies in a big way. So just wanted, you know, while you were speaking, I was thinking how to, you know, kind of take forward. Minia, last question because we'll be out of time.
Two questions from the audience. I want to make sure they are in. There's Shirani Nayar, she's asking you, Mr. Myra, that the concentration of wealth with the few organizations is increasing the inequality at a rapid rate. How can we expect any kind of turnaround? And, you know, to that, I've written about this also a lot. Is there any incentive also for people to dismantle inequality? Because it seems to work well for politicians and for business. So how can we, you know, dismantle inequality? The second, the second question is from Abhinav Rahul, who's asking that the two percent CSR spent might be a limiting factor as corporates think that they have done their bit for the society. So your views in this context, that what can large Indian corporates start doing to set examples for the rest, you know, to go beyond the CSR and do more?
Well, the first one is a profound question actually. And I say that, you know, it's a matter of growing up incomes from the bottom. It's not a matter of, I think, dismantling the incomes of the top. Because that is like, you know, the French Revolution or something where you want to decapitate the people. And I don't think that's a, it's a good thing. So I'm following more Mahatma Gandhi's example. He says, yeah, let the rich make money. Yeah, because you want people to be efficient, use resources efficiently. But let them treat the wealth that they have as trustees of society. So I am not against wealth, in fact, it's good. But I'm saying, where is the wealth created? Where is it getting generated and accumulated? And we need new models in which the wealth is created more at the bottom. And linking this with Anurag, you mentioned about, you know, young people in social enterprises. There are, in fact, in India, I find thousands of these young people. They are creating social enterprises. They are not CSR officers or responsibility officers within large corporations. Because the large corporation is, you know, restricted by its construction. Its CEO also is required to, you know, pay a lot of attention to what the market expects of her or him. These other enterprises, they are genuine social enterprises. They are not seeking to be subsidized, they are not like philanthropic ventures. They are generating. And I gave you Seva's example as one that can just make us think that there are many, many such enterprises and young people are forming lots of them in this country. I call them the fireflies. They've got a passion to do something, it's their own light, their own caring. They are small, yes, and therefore fireflies. But they rise because they want to spread that little light that they have and to share it and others come along with them. So this form of enterprise, this form of social enterprise is where young people of this country are doing great work. So when we talk about, you know, evaluating business responsibility, let's consider these people also as a form of business. They are, they're not subsidized charities, okay? But you're not finding them in the stock market because in the stock market, they'll continue to get evaluated by how much wealth they produce for shareholders. So therefore, the ideas are coming also about, you know, we need a new stock exchange, a new social sector exchange and so on. So there is these opportunities and we must build on those. So to the point about the CSR, the CSR, of course, I mean, I have said this before and Anurag knows this, that I felt that that was a cop-out. Actually, at that time before that, Minia, you know this from the history, Anurag does, the Corporation of India had got together and created the National Voluntary Guidelines. Now, this was a movement done by the business community itself, taking the help of the best people abroad like DRI and Global Compact, who had frameworks and said, let's look at your frameworks and then adjust them for the conditions here in India. And so they developed the National Voluntary Guidelines and government was part of it. Government, that's the Ministry for Corporate Affairs newly set up then, said, look, we want in India, business to not be controlled by government, but business to be responsible. You say, what is it that you want to be measured by? And then we might request that the stock exchange and others judge businesses by these additional measures and not just by the stock market. So this came out. And but just at that time, some people, and they are again business people in government perhaps, are close to government, said, no, no, this is very complicated. You mean, every company is going to have to be writing more reports about how it is accounting for the environment and so on? Too much work. Why don't we just tell the companies to give some money? It's very easy, you know, write a cheque. So let's have two percent CSR. And it was the celebration to say, ah, India has become the first country in the world where the businesses have become responsible. On the contrary, like the question asked to me was, in fact, it was enabling businesses to avoid being really responsible. And to say, well, since I've gone on the Sunday morning to the temple and given my little cheque, the rest of the week I can do what I like and make a lot of money and I'll give a little larger cheque next week and be absorbed with all my sins. My two percent here, there, every year and let me lose my money whichever way I'm making it.
Thank you, Mr. Myra. It's always a pleasure speaking with you and we could go on. One hour has passed away, like, it was ten minutes. And we're getting very good feedback on the chat room, you can read it yourself. But Pranak Kirsisalo said, I would like to congratulate you for a well-organized webinar and high-quality discussion. The present speaker, Sari, is really wise and represents a new healthy business in a sustainable way. Thank you very much, Mr. Myra. Every word you spoke.